Because my wife's been up about, uh, since yesterday morning, about nine o'clock. Uh, she just doesn't think she needs to sleep anymore. Can't walk, she's so tired that she won't go to bed.
Dave, is your granddaughter gonna make an appearance?
They are gone right now, but, uh, there's a good chance that she'll show up and she has to see Papa.
Well, she was the highlight last time, so it's good.
Well, I found out, uh, this week that, uh, she's gonna have a little brother or little sister, so.
Oh, well, congratulations.
Yeah, it'll be good.
Well, Cory, it looks like we're at seven o'clock.
Mayor. Seven o'clock.
All right, well, I'll call the meeting to order. I was just pulling the agenda up and, uh, I will call a meeting to order at seven oh one on April twenty seventh, twenty twenty. It's our second, city council meeting by virtual Zoom, and I think we've all gotten a little bit better just in the last two weeks, so if we could, uh, start with, um, who has a flag in the background? All right, um, uh, Councilman McMillan, could you lead us in the, uh, flag slip?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance
That's quite strange, but we'll keep trying it. Cory, could you do roll call for me?
Yes. Mayor Winkelman?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Patterson?
Here.
Pivogel?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Wilson? Anderson? Carlstrom?
Here.
Dick?
Here.
George?
Here.
Grun? Tension?
Here.
McMillan?
Here.
Alrighty. We have a quorum.
Great, so we'll, we'll move forward. I know, uh, two of the other council members joined us at the regulatory meeting earlier, so they might just be looking for the link or trying to log on, so we'll, uh, add them to the minutes if they pop in late. Uh, first on the council agenda, we had communications. There's a letter from, um, Barney and Rocky Oldfield.
Hold on, I'm sorry. It looks like Denise is possibly in as a attendee. I think I can move her to a panelist.
Oh, interesting. We'll try it.
Oh, it looks like she's rejoining, so just keep going and she'll, she'll rejoin.
Okay, yeah, I did that at the regulatory meeting earlier. You have to go in through the link on your email rather than the one on the agenda. Okay, uh, there is communication. Um, Brian, I'm not sure if you have a copy that in front of you or, or Cory has a way to address that.
Yeah, I have it, and I think she can screen share.
I can screen share, and Denise is here for the record.
Great. Welcome, Denise. You're getting closer.
I couldn't find the email.
Okay, hold on one second and I can share the email.
You're doing a screen share on that letter then, Cory?
Yeah, so it should be coming through.
It's up.
It's there.
Okay.
And we should, should have received this as well as a separate email, but if you didn't, this is the, the letter that we received. Uh, do you want to cover it, Cory? Or Brian?
Yeah, I, yeah, I can give it to you in a nutshell. So every once in a while, you know, the city will demolish a property and file a lien at the county with the cost of the demolition. Years ago, we demolished a large apartment complex on this lot that is adjacent to Action Air. They bought the lot at a tax sale several years ago for under, just under seven thousand dollars. Uh, they went to sell the property recently to new owners, and when it went through the title report, the lien showed up. They wanted the city to, uh, forgive some of the, the lien and the demolition. They had hoped to present this to the city council, um, prior to the sale going through, but they did not have time to do it. The sale has actually already gone through. We have received all the money from the lien. It was taken out at the, basically the transaction of the property sale, but they're asking for the city to accept a lesser amount than the, than the total lien was, and then we would reimburse them the difference between what they, what we received and their offer of paying a fifteen thousand dollars. Ultimately, you know, we were not required to do anything, but they're asking for the city to forego some of the demolition costs that we paid years ago.
And I, I happen to be, uh, at the particular, um, tax auction, and there were, there were a few properties at that particular auction where, um, they, the liens were noted, but they, they didn't disclose them on the bid sheet, I think, and so, um, the owner, the seller in this case, reached out to both Brian and myself, uh, a few months ago, really, when it first became apparent that it was gonna be a problem, but he was concerned about the business closing or losing the, the sale because of the lot that's adjacent to it, and I, I would have to agree kind of with his, with his letter that he really had no choice but to go ahead and, and allow the city to receive the funds, otherwise he could have potentially lost the, sell the business or had closure of the business, and so he did meet with us on a few different occasions, but we, uh, Steve Johnson informed us that this was a matter that would have to go to the council if we were going to remove or forgive any part of the lien, and so that's why it's here now. Even though it seems like it's kind of after the fact, I don't think it was intended to be that way. In fact, he brought it to our attention right away. I don't, uh, know that there'd be any action taken at this part of the agenda under communication, but if somebody were to bring a motion, um, later in the agenda, I think, you know, it could be considered at that time.
Can we ask a question? I can't raise my hand because you, this screen share, but.
Yeah, I still see you on the side.
Oh, okay, so, um, my question is, how much is the, uh, what was the amount of the lien? So what are they asking to be forgiven? I know how much that they want to pay was the fifteen nine eighty-eight, uh, fifteen nine eighty-eight on what?
So I, to be honest, I don't have the dollar amount at the top of my head, but it's, I believe it's like twenty-five, twenty-six thousand is what they actually paid the city. So around ten thousand is they're asking us to forgive.
Yeah, and, and if I, if I could speak, um, when, when they came and asked for forgiveness or, or for a discount on the lien, the, their, their story was that it was going to jeopardize the sale, and we wouldn't get anything. If that has been proven to be not true, they went ahead with the sale. Uh, had they came to the council before the sale, they might have had a plausible argument that you know, the city, or the city would have a plausible argument to make for the state audit that the city took a less amount, uh, so that they didn't lose the entire lien. But now they've gone through with the sale, they paid the entire amount, and, and if the city were to give any of it back, it would be.
Did everybody else lose audio on Steve there?
I, yeah, I did.
Yeah, yeah, I did.
Yeah, I'm having, I'm having the same problem I did last week with my internet.
So I know what he was trying to say, though, about it being a gift of public funds, so by forgiving that ten thousand dollars, that would ba- basically be a gift, um, you know, without having the rationale of, of the, the sale going through and losing that entire amount, and, uh, he can interject if I'm totally wrong there.
That, that, that's what I was saying, yeah. It just, my, my internet connection is, uh, in and out. But that's exactly, yeah, uh, you know, they, they portrayed this as a, uh, kind of went out the window. And the city did pay to have that building demolished, just you know, the city expended the funds in the lien within the property.
I'm not sure if we lost him for a little bit or, or if he's still kind of cutting in and out, but, um, at this point, uh, this is still just listed under communications, so, um, rather than discuss it further, let's see if there's a motion to, to address this letter later on in the agenda, and we'll move on to, the public comment. I'm not sure if anything was received from Tracy, uh, regarding the public comment email.
She just checked her email and her junk email and nothing.
Okay, so, uh, any, any public members of the, uh, community that are watching this, we're asking that you submit an email through pub, for the public comment period, um, since we had some trouble with, uh, the chat features at the previous meeting, and so, um, please look at the council agenda in advance, um, and then you would email twood@citypocwim.com. And we, we ask you to try and do that before ten AM, but, uh, as you just saw, she'll, she'll try and check it right at the time of the meeting, but hopefully that's not too much of an inconvenience for people, but that's how we're gonna address the public comment period for, uh, for the time being by council's motion at the last meeting. The next agenda items are the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved that we accept consent agenda items A and B has written.
For?
There's a motion of support. Is there any discussion regarding the consent agenda? Okay, we're, we're going to, and I should have addressed this earlier, um, re- regarding our last meeting, we asked Cory to go through and do a roll call vote on each motion. Um, what I'm gonna ask us to do at this time is, so long as people are, remain connected here and we don't have people popping in and out, um, I'm going to ask that the motion, uh, passes by consent unless there's an objection, so what I'll do is ask, is there any objection to the consent agenda passing as, as presented? Okay, I don't hear any objection or see any waving, and so, um, that will pass by, by consent. The consent agenda by, by consent and consensus, uh, general consensus. Uh, is everyone comfortable with us handling the agenda or motions in that fashion? If there's, uh, any objection, could you raise it now?
I, 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 I think that that's okay. I mean, it's, it's common in other forms of, uh, rules of order, but not necessarily what we've used, but, um, I think if everybody's comfortable with it, we can go with that.
Okay, yeah, and I kind of felt the same way. I looked up the, it's, it's not gonna, it's not going to match the, uh, formal rules of order, um, that we generally follow or were asked to follow, but, um, trying to make accommodations to address the current format, and if it becomes a problem, any council member should raise that as an issue, and we can go back to more formal roll call votes. Uh, the next agenda item, uh, so that motion carries by, by general consent. The next agenda item is, uh, council action or discussions. Are there any committee reports? I don't believe we have any committee reports that have been submitted. Uh, how about officer reports? Nothing. Brenda, you going for that? You're good?
I'm waiting till after you.
Okay, uh, mayor's report, I have very little to report compared to our, our last and first, the first meeting a couple of weeks ago, but um, I would like to just bring to the council's attention that, uh, there are a couple of projects that are planned, um, and I know um, some members of our community are asking about um, the governor's decision about to, how to reopen things, and we'll need to address those kind of moving ahead as well, but, uh, in particular, on May fourth, um, the, uh, city, the, I should say, the high school is attempting to address the graduation of their, uh, seniors at the high school, and so they've put together a plan where they've, uh, shared with us kind of how they intend to practice their social distancing and try to celebrate those seniors, and part of that plan is to place a, um, a senior banner for each senior, and I believe there are about a hundred and twenty if they include their online seniors and such, and so uh, by placing those banners, they wanted to, they, they looked at several different locations, talked to us about trying to put them up on poles, and there were all kinds of different issues, but eventually they settled on, um, placing the, after they go get their caps and gowns, there's some sort of pattern or route that they will be scheduled to, pick up their senior banner that has their name and photo on it, um, and they will place those, but with zip ties on the fencing on the side of the park, uh, at Central Play Park, and so um, they wanted to make sure the council was aware and that, um, our police department was aware that there will be, there will be a couple of, uh, members of the senior class, their parents, uh, that will be making sure that everybody is practicing social distancing, that they're already pre-marked where they're supposed to hang their, their banner, that they could take, uh, a picture with their immediate family and then move on, and so there's, there is a plan, um, but they didn't want uh, everyone to be concerned about their use of the park, which is technically closed at this time, and so um, I wanted to make sure the council was aware that that plan was in place and see if there were, would be any, um, concerns or objections to that, although the, the plan is well along, uh, and, um, I, I don't know, the communication has been good from the senior parents, and I think that the school district and the administrators have taken it very seriously on how to, how to set that up so that they don't have um, issues, but they will be on the edge of the park that's technically closed on May fourth. Um, I believe it's in the middle of the day. There were some concerns about vandalism or potential vandalism, and apparently whoever made the banners is, uh, local and can find replacements in kind of short order if we have a major problem, but, um, hopefully we don't. Guess that's all we can do is hope, um, but I wanted to make sure that you are all aware of that, also, that Mayor, Mayor Dingler at Ocean Shores today, um, has extended her, um, uh, prohibition on having the hotels open and, uh, other park areas, and so she's, she's extended that, uh, closure to, through the end of the month. I don't feel like we need to do any additional closures, but the governor's statement today did allow the cities to kind of, uh, decide on their own if they felt that there should be further restrictions, and at this time, I don't know, none of our, um, department heads or any other administrators, council people have reached out and asked to have any additional restrictions imposed, and I don't know that there's necessarily anything that we need to do to remove restrictions since we do have our employees kind of coming back to work and doing things within their departments that, that we allowed basically through our last meeting, and so, um, other, other, um, things kind of from the mayor's report that I wanted to mention, uh, I know many people have been checking the, the IRS website to see when they might get a stimulation, uh, the stimulus check, and, um, it didn't work for a lot of people. Uh, the website just was broken or it gave you kind of a, a dead end. Um, they did a significant update to the website this weekend, and so if you checked it before without success, you might want to go and double check it now, so that's something you should let your citizens know if people are reaching out to you in frustration that they have made some improvements with the IRS website, um, and there's now a second round of general funding through the SBA for businesses, and so I know a number of local businesses have learned their lesson on being a little bit slow on the first go around and are trying to get into that this morning and, and have really been working hard on it, so if any business owners are reaching out to you or they haven't pursued that, then you know, please encourage them to do so. Work with Greater Grace Harbor, work with the Hope and Business Association, or reach out to somebody at the city, and it, we can at least give them a phone number to, to call, so. Anyway, I appreciate what you guys are all doing. Um, it's been a little bit quiet the last couple of weeks. I think everybody's kind of settling into a lot of change, but if any of you feel like there's something that we're, we're missing and we should talk about, please reach out. Everybody's generally been really good about being available, and I appreciate that, so I don't have any other mayor's reports. I'm sure I'm forgetting a whole bunch of things, but, uh, let's move on to any council reports.
Dave.
Carlstrom, you have your hand up?
Okay, I'll do, I'll do really quick. Um, the, uh, Hope and Business Association's gonna have their board meeting on Wednesday via Zoom. If anybody wants to participate, let me know, and I'll send you the link. Um, it'll be at five fifteen.
Great. Are there any other council reports? Just wave your hand up there. Uh, Cory, you have one?
Uh, Mr. Wilson just joined us.
Oh, okay, I see you there, Mr. Wilson.
Sorry, I had the wrong link.
Yeah, that's okay. You were watching, just couldn't say anything, right?
No, I was on the wrong link. I had a hard time getting in.
Oh, all right, well, we're getting better at it. We're getting better. We're all getting better. Uh, any council, any other council reports? Hey, I don't see anything on my screen, uh, so we'll move on. There doesn't appear to be any agenda items under ordinances, resolutions, or other legal, but I would, um, ask that we continue to keep in mind the fact that we do have the public hearings for the, um, bee, beekeeping, uh, out there, and so let's, let's not forget that since it's been kind of tabled for now. Is there old business? Any unfinished business? Um, Mr. Pivogel?
Uh, yes, I have a question for, um, actually for Cory, and did you, I, I'm trying to remember correctly, did you have plans for a supplemental budget in like June? Is that still correct, or am I remembering wrong?
June or July, it depends, um. Yeah, June, July, we usually do one halfway through a year, and then we'll do another one at the end of the year. Because that'll be the end of the biennium, so.
Right.
Yeah, and if not, it doesn't have to be, I mean, if we have to keep having virtual meetings, we can wait till the end of the year. It's not that big of a deal.
We could still do a supplemental budget by Zoom, couldn't we?
Yeah, it's just, it's, I mean, the main, the number one main thing is just to make sure we do it by the end of the year. It's not, we don't have to do one.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I had a question.
Is that, oh, uh, Mr. Crabb?
Yeah, I, I got in. Um, there was a tim- timber sale here a while back, and did that ever get approved?
Yeah, there was a timber sale that, uh, I approved kind of right at the beginning of this, uh,
Oh, this?
This whole pandemic issue, and, uh, I signed the contract, and I was just asking in regulatory today when we might expect to receive those funds, and it was my understanding that it varies when, you know, kind of depending on when they're gonna do the job, um.
Yeah, I, I thought you were talking about, you know, the Davis Creek watershed, that sale. You're, uh, you were talking about the in-town sale, weren't you?
Uh, there were two different, two different sales, so I was curious about both, but the, the one, uh, was signed, was that at the beginning of March, um, Cory? I don't remember exactly the, the date on that.
Yeah, there were two at the beginning of March. One was with Sheriff Pacific, the other one was with Harbor Timber.
Oh, that's right.
Those were awarded, uh, under, um, the executive order, and we should have received a hundred thousand dollar payment from, um, I think it was Sheriff Pacific in the last week or so. They, they sent in a check. The in-town sale, um, Kurt Essis just got the court practices permit, so we are permitting to proceed with that sale, and he and I have a conference call this morning afternoon to discuss next.
Great, thank you. One of the things I want to make sure that you address with him, uh, is regarding the funding, when he went out and kind of did the timber crews, where that, where the timber comes from, uh, if it's coming off of what's been designated as cemetery property, that the proceeds of those sales would go to the cemetery fund where uh, the, the remainder would go to, I guess it would be the general fund. But we need to make that designation, um, or distinction with, with Mr. Essis when, when we're moving forward so that that comes into the, the proper accounts. I'm sure Cory would appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem.
Uh, any other, uh, council reports, or I'm sorry, uh, any other unfinished business? Uh, Mr. Pivogel? Oh, you're me.
I don't know if this is unfinished business or not, but actually it was a question of what you said earlier about the parks. So are you planning on lifting or keeping the current restrictions in place? Because I wasn't really sure on what you were saying there regarding parks.
Okay, yeah, thanks for that question. I, I didn't, I don't intend to, uh, lift anything at this point regarding the, the parks, um, but I do wanted to, I did want you all to know that there was, I don't know if you'd call it a pseudo exception or what, but the, the, um, school district came to us very specifically with a plan, and they have designated adults that are going to address social distancing for that one. And I don't even want to call it an event, but it's one, uh, couple of hours that where they're gonna be putting signs on the fence.
Yeah, I'm okay with all of that. I was just concerned that we were gonna be opening up the playgrounds and the shelters.
I don't have any plan to do that today or this time.
Okay, very good.
And, and I would appreciate it if, uh, any council person who has an opinion on that topic when it comes up, uh, I'll, I'll reach out to you, Mr. Pivogel, to kind of, um, make sure to touch base with all the council members before a decision like that gets made.
Okay.
Any other unfinished or old business? Is there any new business from the council or department or staff? No new business? No new business? Second public comment has been suspended under the previous decision of the council. Is there any executive session at this meeting? Bunch of head nods that we don't have any. Is there a motion? Have all the council members joined us at this point?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, I think we've got full attendance, so no, no need for other discussion. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Brian, are you raising your hand on it?
I just, before you adjourn, you know, this would be the last chance if anybody was going to make a motion on that action error thing. Otherwise, if there's no motion, I would say that's just notify the owners that you took no action.
Good point. Is there any motion in that regard?
What was it about the action error again? I I missed it.
This is a a letter that they sent to us. We melted out today. But they're leaning on their property on a lot that they bought adjacent to their property of roughly twenty five thousand. They sold the property already. Paid us the lien for the demolition we did previously on an old apartment building. And they're asking for us to reimburse them roughly ten thousand dollars of what that lien was. And it wasn't, it wasn't a building they own that they they bought and encumbered property. And they're wanting us to forego, you know, roughly ten grand.
So how do you feel about? Or you you or Steve or what?
Well, Steve, Steve noted that under the current circumstances, it might be considered gifting because the gifting of public funds because the city actually spent that money to do the demolition at an earlier date. There initially, when we were approached, there was some concern that the business would be lost or that the sale would be lost because of the lien. Because they weren't able to bring that to the council due to this COVID nineteen thing, they went ahead with the sale and the seller basically absorbed that expense, and it was taken out of closing and sent to the city. And it was the seller that sent a letter asking for some relief from that that amount because they have completed the sale. And tell me if I'm not not getting this right, Steve, but because they've completed the sale, there's no risk of losing the sale. And therefore, at this point, I think Mr. Johnson's opinion was that we'd be gifting public funds.
Yeah, I'm not seeing any rationale at all behind giving them a break on this.
You you said it, you said it said it accurately, Mr. Mayor.
So they sold a property and all or the majority of the money actually went to the city to pay back a previous lien. And so the seller didn't actually get any money for the sale?
No, I I don't know the exact terms of their sale, but I'm sure they got money. They sold their business, and this was just part of the part of the proceeds were.
Okay, yeah, the letter from from the email, the letter didn't mention any like, I don't know, the the hard numbers of of the whole situation.
Mr. Grund, did that answer your question?
It did. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't want to get in the business of I guess refunding people for something that maybe they didn't do the research before and find out that there's lien. So I I certainly don't feel that we we need to bring this forward.
Yeah, perhaps the the seller will go address the county about notification at the when they purchased it at the county sale. I don't, I don't. I mean, it's kind of on the buyer, you know, buyer buyer beware sort of thing, but I don't know.
I I think I just think we have to watch out before we set a precedent for gifting public funds.
Yeah. It's a, I I I certainly empathize with them and and all that, and less so about creating a precedent and all that. I mean, obviously, it would, but to me, we have no legal argument, and it would cost us much more than we'd be forgiving. Rather, I mean, it's an unfortunate situation, especially for the buyer, but we're in a we have to take the legal route here.
Yeah. Good way to verbalize that, Mr. Provogo. Good job. Familiarity from your employment.
A little bit.
Perhaps.
A little bit.
Okay, if there's no motion, I think we thoroughly discussed it anyway. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Support.
There's a motion of support. Unless I hear objection, then we'll pass that motion by consent. Is are there any objections to adjourn?
Who made that motion? We didn't catch that. Thank you.
And Mr. Hension was supporting. Okay, there's hearing no objections, so we'll conclude the the meeting. The motion carries to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you all.